We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I was hoping that the mayor of Jonya would be here. But he's not here this evening, and none of his staff is here either. So I have right now 6:40, so it's 10 minutes past the hour that we start this meeting. So however, I would like to recognize the presence of Mayor Gogui from Chalampago. So at this time, the Committee on Lands will cause this public hearing to order. It is now 6:40 on Wednesday, September 21st, 2016. I also want to recognize the senators who are with us tonight. To my right is the Vice Speaker BJ Cruz. To my left is Senator Tommy Morrison, who is a co-sponsor for Bills 365 and 366. And to his left is Senator Jim Espaldon. I don't think there's any other senators here. Also present tonight is Director Mike Borha from the Department of Land Management. So thank you for joining us tonight. Yes, I recognized Mayor Gogui earlier, first. But before we actually start with the bill itself, as we have done in the other village meetings, we want to give an overview of the municipality of Jonya. The landmass that's involved, what's going on, utilities, et cetera. So my Chief of Staff, Joe Borha, will give a brief overview.
Again, if you'll notice, this is a map of Guam with the municipalities outlined. And we have Jonya right here. As you can tell, it's one of the big municipalities. And we want to differentiate between the word "village" and "municipality," because Jonya is not only the village, it also has that big area. Pete, can you expand it? And then, of course, there's the actual municipal lines. If you notice, some of the lines are straight, and some of them are jagged, some of the municipal boundaries. When you see a line like that that's jagged, it usually means that the boundary is a river. In this particular case, it's the Ascenan River. And if you try and remember the shape of Jonya municipality, the next slide will show aerial photograph. It's kind of hard to see, but if you look down there, that's the actual municipality of Jonya. The village, of course, is over here, but the municipality covers that entire area. So that's the municipality of Jonya. Next slide, Pete. And then this is just a better resolution satellite photo from Google Earth. And this white spot that you see here is the ordered landfill, ordered dump. And then, of course, you have the village here. And then over here, you have the big development in Jonya now, which is the Leo Palace Resort. And basically, that's it for Jonya. The other areas in Jonya are vacant red clay soil. And in the south, there's 4,000, approximately 4,000-plus acres that belong to Chamorro Land Trusts. But Jonya only has about 94 acres of Chamorro Land Trusts property. And those lots are basically over in the Pulantat area. So that's it, Senator.
And of course, priority, Jonya residents who have signed up. And then testimonies, then from outside, the municipality will be the next group of people to provide testimony. But before we actually start receiving testimonies, let me just give a real brief overview of the two bills that we are hearing tonight on Bills 365 and 366. Next slide. So on Bill 365, it deals with making sure that when the municipal planning councils conduct their municipal meetings regarding land use applications, we want to make sure that that municipal planning council meeting is informed. Informed by the findings and recommendations from the Application Review Committee. So basically, the three main points of the bill is one. And please note that what was introduced has been evolving as we have public hearings. So the first main point is that upon receipt of a land use application at the Department of Land Management, at one of the village meetings, one of the mayors says, "When you get that land use application, we want to have a copy as soon as possible so that we can start reviewing what this project is going to be about." So a copy will be given to the MPC of interest and to the Application Review Committee. The Application Review Committee is comprised of representatives from the various agencies, such as Water, Power, and EPA, et cetera. Then, we want the MPC meetings to be informed by the findings of the ARC. So what that necessarily is going to mean is that unlike, in contrast to what's going on right now, where ARC is doing their own analysis and coming out with their own recommendations and then provide that input to the Guam Land Use Commission, the municipality may also be conducting their meetings at the same time, but without the benefit of the findings of the ARC. And as I understand it, the Jonya Municipal Planning Meeting, basically, it was the developer representative that was here that was giving information about what this project is about. And then, the third requirement that the bill would make is that representatives or representative from the ARC must be present at the Municipal Planning Council meeting to be able to respond to questions regarding findings and recommendations. So somebody from that municipality of interest certainly may have more detailed information about, "Well, did you consider this?" Or "Did you consider that?" And so if the ARC rep is from GGO, he misses, "Well, no, we didn't," whatever. So at any rate, a representative from the ARC would be required to be present at that meeting. The next bill is Bill 366, which is really probably the meat of why we are here. A bill that will declare a moratorium on development in the southern area. And this bill was introduced as a complementary response to Public Law 33-145, which was introduced earlier this year by Senator Tommy Morrison, which requires the development of a Southern Development Master Plan. And Bill 366 will then impose a land use moratorium for the next two years or until a master plan has been completed, whichever comes first. So if a master plan gets completed in a year's time, so be it. We lift the moratorium, and we can move on. But of course, the completion of a master plan includes holding public hearings after it's been formulated, coming down to the legislature. The legislature will hold public hearings, and then it has to be approved by the legislature. So one year might be a little too ambitious. Two years may be doable. Next slide, please. So this moratorium will be applicable to the seven southern villages: Sanarita, Aggett, Yumadak, Maritzo, Inarahan, Talafoco, and Jonya. And the moratorium will place a hold on the issuance of building permits, licenses for use of land or buildings, variances, and the creation of public unit developments. Next. There are some exceptions. Next slide. There are, now, if a developer feels that their project cannot wait the two years, you know, then what, the bill makes provisions that that developer can then go to the Land Use Commission and basically put the application through that process that they normally would, except that if the Land Use Commission approves the package, then they have to come down to the legislature for a final round of scrutiny and a final approval. There will be exemptions to the moratorium. It will not affect those projects which have already been approved prior to the enactment of this bill, if it gets passed into law. So those projects that have already been approved will continue to march on unaffected. The second exemption will be the construction of single-family homes or minor additions there, too. So, you know, that will go on unimpeded. And that basically is the gist of Bill 366. So now, we're going to go ahead and begin the testimony, and we'll start with the first Jonya resident that has signed up, and that's Zita, actually, the only Jonya resident, right? That has signed up. Are there any other Jonya residents that would like to speak on the bill?
Buenos Aires Senators, Dankunasituzusmaasi for reaching out and bringing the bills to our community, for our residents here in Jonya. And more importantly, for listening and hearing our concerns over our latest experience with Pago Bay, and thus introducing bills to avoid a repeat of that experience. These bills give us hope, as it aligns with our desire to ensure that we are given the time to develop a master plan for our southern Guam. And more importantly, to have a voice in the community. Absent many hearings that I have attended at the Guam Land Use Commission, or absent those hearings where I attended the Guam Land Use Commission, is the discussion of the value given to our people, our residents' concerns over development in our community. Yes, it was noted that we objected, but in terms of weighing it and making decisions and placing and weighting that desire, I think that was absent. You have heard it consistently from our community members, Senator, who and what are we planning our development for? And as we have experienced with the conditional approval of Pago Bay, when we emphatically cried out, "No!" And the only alternative it seems to be is that we cough up monies that we do not have, or spend our precious time away from our families to attend weekly meetings and public hearings to protect and defend our land, our community, and the way we wish to live. Ma inkadgahid para ta protehi, zen ta difendi i ari i hanum zenitanu para iman mamaila na zen mas prissisu para iman mamaila na generashon. Enegi ma fanaguetta. We have been charged to protect and defend our air, water, and land for generations to come, as we have been taught. Hungan put for board, set this two-year moratorium on all development, commercial development, until a Southern master plan by our people, for our people, and to guide us in our growth and development. The great valuable lessons we have is our past experience, or our past experiences. We can no longer focus on just economics and the investments of nonresidents to adversely affect our livelihood as a people, as we have experienced in past developments, that has left our people, that has left our people to deal with the burdens of these numerous and costly mistakes, adversely affecting our people, our sacred lands, and our environment. It is for this reason that I testify and support Bill 365-33 and 366-33 with the recommended changes as follows. I really appreciated the exemptions that you are providing also, because I didn't think about it, but those are pretty good, I hope. But for Bill 365-33, we would like to see change, the incorporation of Senator Frank Uggins' bill and Senator Tommy Morrison on 318-33, where you also allow that no project shall be approved by the Land Use Commission unless it has been approved, get the approval of the relevant municipal planning council. That's the only change I would recommend for 365-33. But for 366-33, because of our experience with Pago Bay, if you could add the municipality of Chalampago to Section 2?
The definition in Section, oh, the definition of what are the municipalities in southern Guam, that was actually defined in Public Law, what was that, 19-38? And so we would have, we'll take a look at that. We'll take a look at including Chalampago. I know that they excluded PT. PT also wants to be involved, and, you know, so we'll take a look at that and the inclusion.
And in terms of Section 3, we're not sure of the filing for approval or disapproval if the legislature fails to take action. So we would, I would think that we would prefer the following language in Section 3, and that we also add the moratorium on the issuance of permits by Land Management, Public Works, all those affected agencies or that provide those conditional approvals. So we would like to add language in Section 3 to include a temporary moratorium on issuance of permits by Land Management, Public Works, GEPA, Guam Water Works, and Department of Parks and Recreation.
So the moratorium on the issuance of building permits is covered in Section 2A or 2B1?
Right. However, in Section 3, with regards to the legislature's approval or disapproval, is there a reason why, is, I just, I'm concerned about it being a loophole, and so I would recommend a deletion of Section 3?
Okay. So noted.
And then, also in Section 3, that the, there shall be, to add the temporary moratorium on issuances of all permits to the same municipalities, Sanarita, Aggett, Maritzo, Inarahan, Talafoco, Jonya, and Chalampago, by those agencies. And for the next two years.
Okay.
Or until such time as the master plan is completed.
So your recommendation is noted, and it'll be, we'll take a look.
Thank you. And to delete Section 4A and add the following language to new Section 6, "Any further actions by any board, administrative director, or employees of the Department of Land Management, Department of Public Works, Guam Environmental Protection, Guam Water Works Authority, Guam Power Authority, and Department of Parks and Rec..." "That conflict with the provisions of this act shall make them collectively and are individually subject to the civil and criminal penalties prescribed by the laws of government of Guam." Again, I think in looking at all these issues that we've had to deal with, and in terms of accountability, we hope that this addition will then allow for our government officials to really rethink actions taken on all these issues that affect our people.
Would you be providing your written testimony?
I can do that.
Great. Thank you. Senator, Senator Espaldon, just a second.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Zita. I was wondering if you could just reiterate and repeat what that new Section 6 would involve? I'm not really sure I caught the gist of that.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I'm not sure I caught the gist of what that new section is.
It's to, primarily, it's calling for accountability, that the actions by the board members or directors or employees, thank you, that conflict with the provision of this act shall make them collectively and are individually subject to the civil and criminal penalties prescribed by law. We're calling for accountability. I'm not sure if that's the way to go. But it appears sometimes, in our perception, that, and what we've been experiencing, is the lack of accountabilities, and that the passage and decisions made that counter fall on deaf ears, and we end up, as a people, then taking all these humongous steps to try and correct and rectify the issues. It takes a lot of resources, a lot of time and energies by peoples trying to protect and defend the rights and/or properties and the communities we live in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for speaking, Lena. Next, I have signing up is, well, the only other person signing up is Adrian Gogui, unless I misread. Did the other Gogui want to speak?
Just for the information of everyone, the Safe Southern Guam Organization has been following this, these series of village hearings since we started in Aggett. And so they've been very dedicated about joining us. And I guess tomorrow, they'll be with us in Yumadak, and I presume down at the legislature on Friday. So please proceed.
Senators, Vice Speaker, Mr. Chairman, Senators Morrison and Espaldon, Spencer, I hope you're, do you also know Guam? I hope you're not, you know, tired of seeing me. Okay. My name is Adrian Gogui. I am a resident of Chalampago, very close to the Pago Bay area. And it's very fitting that you're taking the public hearings to the villages, bringing it to the grassroots and hearing their concerns. Safe Southern Guam is in favor of Bills 365 and 366, which we have repeated at every public hearing today. It may not be perfect, but it's a start. Okay. So I'm going to kind of deviate from my normal presentation, if you will, Senator. Okay, January 26, 2016. The developer held its public hearing here in the municipality of Jonya, and I attended it, and I was privileged to speak there. By the way, villagers of Jonya, thank you for opening up your community and allowing us to speak here. Thank you very much. I have in front of me the same trifold that I brought with me in January 26. And I want to just give you an update of what I spoke about then and where we are today. So I went to a date calculator, and it says it's been 259 days since January 6th to now. Okay? At that hearing, we talked about, you know, the impacts to the infrastructure, the environment, the cultural aspects. And just in general, what I spoke there was Chapter 61, the zoning law for Guam. It's codified. So the first thing I said there was, "Did you know that Pago is an ancient Chamorro village? It predates Spanish colonization." Tie that in to where we're at today. So Pago Bay Laguna Resort, Phases 1 and 2. When you drive down the hill and you see the picturesque bay, they erected a concrete fence. Can't go in there anymore. They unearthed, according to the archaeologists on the Micronesian Area Research Center report that was submitted with Guam Wangfang's application for the variants, 11 remains were unearthed for the sake of development. And oh, by the way, when they approved Phases 1 and 2, the Guam Land Use Commission, they issued a notice of action with conditional approval. One of the conditions set forth there was the proper reburial, rededication, and to memorialize our ancestors. After Pago, 2016, September 21st, when we were at the Guam Land Use Commission hearings in February and March, respectively, the consultants said, "We're still trying to figure out the way ahead. The remains have not been given the proper reburial." That's shame on us. Shame on us. A condition in the notice of action in March 2008, and a bunch of others from the respective Application Review Committees, have no meaning whatsoever in today's island. Why? Because if no one's going to enforce these conditions, it's a developer's haven out If we went to another country, okay, and we unearthed the inhabitants' remains, and we didn't give it a proper reburial, you know, how is that going to reflect on us? But if they don't enforce it, if the local government don't enforce those conditions, I'm not necessarily going to blame the developer. It's our government. Those were conditions put in the notice of action of 2008. I submit to you, okay, I'm going to speak passionately. You already know our position on 365 and 366. But what I'm trying to expose here is a repeated, lackadaisical enforcement of conditions that we, our government, have put on paper and have let developers off scot-free. If you read that, go to the Guam Land Use Commission website. Google "notice of action 2008, March." Hopefully, you find it. You will find the one that was approved on April 28th of this year. Read those notice of actions. Is it merely a recommendation or a suggestion? Because from an islander, it should be a shawl and a must. Where's that mutual community benefit? Where's that mutual community benefit that we expect our government to... Where is that mutual community benefit that we expect our government to look out for us? So that's one. Pago's an ancient Chamorro village. Tie that to the remains that have shamelessly been unearthed, not given the proper reburial, and to this day, no one can give you the room.
Mr. Gogui. Yes, sir. Excuse me, but I'm going to ask that in your, in your relaying of the story or the situation, try and tie it in to Bill 365 and 366, okay?
Okay. Okay, sir. So the 365 says the Municipal Planning Council should be a part, you know, of the public hearing. No public hearing will take place at the municipal level until the agency, Application Review Committee, has done its assessment and has provided that to the MPC. Okay? And then the 366 is the moratorium, stop the development, except for those that are proposed as exemptive. Okay, so that's that. Why do we need the moratorium? Chapter 61 on the height limit established. In an R2 area where they're going to build, okay, and predominantly, the rest of the southern Guam is either R1 or R2, some of them may be commercial. But in an R2 area, the maximum height that you can build is three stories not to exceed 30 feet. Why do we need the moratorium? Because builders are exceeding this and no one's enforcing it. And oh, by the way, why do we need the moratorium? The developer proposed initially 14 and 15 stories. That way exceeds R2 limits. And in their minutes in April 28, the conversation between the Guam Land Use Commission and the consultant, they were talking back and forth about, "Oh, if you reduce the density, it's going to affect us, and in the long run, they want to build a hotel there, or they want to turn it into a hotel." But that's an R2 zone. What they're proposing is a hotel zone. And if you look at Chapter 61, the hotel zone says 75 feet, not to exceed seven stories. That's why we need the moratorium. That's why we need the Municipal Planning Council's involvement in Bills 365. Okay? So I apologize, Senator, for going probably off script, but the thing, the fact of the matter is, is that if we don't engage the communities, and if we don't put a moratorium, there's going to be development across the island that could have impacts to the community. You know, I've said some of them, the infrastructure, the environment, the cultural aspect. Okay? So anyways, my takeaway from this is that as the Guam Land Use Commission looks at applications for either rezoning or variants of some sort, is that what's, what's the community benefit? What are we going to benefit from? And if they put those benefits in ways of conditions, whose enforcing the conditions? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gogui. Well, we're actually very much ahead of schedule, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the invitation one more time. Anybody from Jonya or anyone in the audience who may want to comment on the two bills, you're certainly welcome. Okay? Gentlemen, any comments, questions? None? Okay. There then being no further comments, and no other persons signing up to testify, then I'm going to call this public hearing into recess. And tomorrow, we will convene in Yumadak at 6:30. Thank you.